I would like to reconvene the meeting and call the meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of June 18, 2019. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Moats?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. First thing I'd like to do is I would like to begin by introducing our new city attorney, Thomas Watson. He comes to the City of Santa Maria with 30 years' experience in civil law and 20 years in municipal law. He has represented eight cities ranging from 10,000 to 100,000 population, either in-house or as a contract attorney. Mr. Watson is coming from the city of Tracy, supporting a full-service city including water, sewer, airport, waste management, and fire. He has extensive sequoia experience and 25 years in land use employment law, litigation, code enforcement, police, construction, risk management, and has provided support to economic development. Mr. Watson is a member of the city's executive team, began his service with the city of Santa Maria yesterday, June 17. Welcome, Mr. Watson. Would you like to say a few words?
Rarely should attorneys be given microphones. I just want to say what an honor it is for me to be able to join this beautiful community, to serve these folks, and to serve this council who has shown true leadership and continues to show true leadership. I've had an opportunity to meet with the executive team, and particularly with the city manager, and I can tell you that in my experience in over 30 years, I have never seen a better-run city, and I'm just honored to be part of it. So I thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to many years of service to this community.
Thank you. And so we're going to put you to work right away. You can give the report out of the closed session.
Yes, ma'am. With respect to the conference of legal counsel, existing litigation related to the case of People versus the State of California versus Dario Pena, instructions were provided to counsel to enter into a settlement. The settlement will be brought forward in open session.
Thank you.
In the future.
Thank you. So our first order of business is a proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
It is with tremendous honor to be able to give this proclamation to a man that has been so dear to me and my family, who has covered this whole entire city with his prayers and just with his goodness, and helping those that weren't able to help themselves. Pastor Bloom, you are an amazing, amazing man, and knowing that you're in God's will, and you have done His work and will continue to do it, is such an honor to be able to give you this proclamation. Whereas Pastor Rick Bloom's successful tenure as a senior pastor for over 53 years best describes him as a man who genuinely cares about everyone in his community, and whereas Pastor Bloom is completing a 22-year tenure at Pacific Christian Center in Santa Maria after also serving as senior pastor in Chula Vista, San Diego, Bloomington, Poway, and Cardiff by the Sea in California. Whereas Pastor Bloom is retiring at a time with the condition of Pacific Christian Church is much improved from its beginning, as the church is now debt-free. Whereas many lives were impacted by the church under Pastor Bloom's leadership, including hundreds of childrens who graduated from its elementary school and the hundreds more to come. Whereas Pastor Bloom greatly increased awareness of Pacific Christian Church and the community with programs like Sidewalk Sunday School and the Angel Food Program, which provided food to families in need. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize the retirement of Pastor Richard P. Bloom in the City of Santa Maria, and wish him and his entire family many happy years and much success in the future endeavors. And I know that even though this is a retirement proclamation, you have no intention of retiring. And you know, you're like the Apostle Paul. You will go until you can't go anymore, and I just, I praise God for you, and I just, I thank you beyond I could ever thank anybody in my life.
I'll just say a few words because I know you have a lot of business tonight, but I want to thank the City of Santa Maria for the warm welcome that they gave me in 1997, the privilege of being able to pastor in this wonderful town. And I especially want to say how much I appreciate the City Council under Madam Patino and also Madam Lavignino and Madam Abel Malvinato. Going back, my memory's gone, but they have always been so kind to the faith community and encouraged us to be involved, and I appreciate that very much. I'll say thank you to many members of my congregation that are here. I'm surprised they see I haven't been in church for six weeks because of an accident that I had, but it's nice. Thank you, folks, for being here. It's been a privilege to serve in this town. And there's two people I especially want to thank. One's in heaven, and one's right here beside my family, and I have my daughter and my granddaughter here, and I call my oldest son Jim Deani down there. No, but I want to thank my family. But my wonderful wife of 49 years, I had Louie's Body's dementia, and she passed away nearly four years ago. And it was a very difficult time because she was a wonderful pastor's wife and a wonderful mom, and a wonderful member of this community. And a year and a half ago, I married Karen Raymer, and she's now Karen Bloom. And I have learned, especially over these last few weeks, how much she loves me, and I just want to express to the entire city how much I love her. And we're going off, you know, happy trails to us. We're heading off. I've got lots of invitations to speak all over Southern California, and I'm going to, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to do what I want to do, okay? I'm not going to do what I have to do. I'm going to do what I want to do, and it's going to be a wonderful time in my life. And thank you so much. I appreciate it. And with all these folks from the church here, I feel like I want to take an offering, but I probably would get away.
Well, Pastor Bloom, if you want to, there's no one to stop you. I mean, we have this, Officer Torterico in the back, but he won't bother you. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pastor Bloom, I don't know how many people know this in the community, but another contribution you made to us is when I was still with the Police Department, you were our police chaplain for a significant period of time. And I don't mind sharing with you, I didn't really know what we were going to do with the police chaplain when they called me in and said, "Here, the police chaplain is now yours," and you followed another good police chaplain. And on behalf of the entire diocese up here for what Ms. Waterfield said, but for me personally, your gifts and your guidance that you gave as a police chaplain is very, very much appreciated. Thank you.
And you know, we have a lot of churches in the City of Santa Maria, and I don't know when I first met you, but I don't go to your church, but you were one of the pastors in the City of Santa Maria that's been so active in our community, and I thank you for that because I have said to the pastors in the ministerial association, "Hey, I need your help, you guys. You need to come and help us in the city more." But you were always there. But thank you very much for that. The next item on our agenda will be the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. Madam Mayor, we have 10 requests this time.
10, okay. Did you notice how quiet they exit in comparison to the people we've had? Okay, so we, no other further speakers, requests to speak will be accepted at this time. Gail McNeely, followed by Victoria Nava, followed by Gary Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk on two issues today. One issue is the issue of public comment and decorum, and the second issue is about the H-2A tenant displacement compensation ordinance. On the first issue, I'd like to read the rules of this chamber. Persons addressing the council will not engage in disorderly conduct which disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting, including belligerent, slanderous, loud, threatening, abusive, or profane remarks, statements, or commentary toward the council, staff, or other individuals. Upon violation of the policy, the presiding officer asks them to cease and desist. If they do not, they can order the person to leave the chamber. I watched the tape of last week's meeting. The man who came forward, whom many of you know because he has a long record in this town, Mark Rattamaker, he was abusive, he was slanderous, he was belligerent, he was threatening to the gay men and women who came up and spoke to you and received your approval for Gay Pride Month. Counsel, it was your job to tell the mayor, point of order, mayor, you are not following the rules that, and I have the rules in my hand, this comes directly from your office, you are not following the rules. Madam Patino, you have the right to say, "Cease and desist." When this man said that gay men and women should be killed, you should have said, "That is too far, sir." Either cease and desist your comment, or you will have to leave the chamber. Members of the council, you should have promoted that. Any one of you could have promoted that by saying, "Mayor, this is not right." So I think you have to look at your consciences and say, "What is your job here when people talk to you?" U.S. council people have to make the mayor do her job. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, you did not do your job. Another way you don't do your job is you give extra time to people that you want to hear from. They say three minutes a person, but when Andy Caldwell comes in, it's 10 minutes, it's 15 minutes, as many minutes as he wants. He is a man who represents the business community. He is a lobbyist for them. He gets paid over $170,000 a year to speak for them. We are just as important. If we get three minutes, Andy Caldwell or anyone else, not just him, gets three minutes. You have to follow the rules that you have set forth, and if you don't, we have to hold you to account, and the council has to hold you to account. On the second issue, it took so long for us to get together, and there was a compromise reached by cause and the growers.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely.
I would like some extra time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely.
Thank you. You would give Andy Caldwell as much time as he wants.
You know what? You are, you're really off-base because I did not do that. I went back and looked at that tape where I was accused of doing that. I did not do that, Mr. McNeely.
In the case of the district elections, Madam Mayor, you did. He spoke 10 minutes after we all had three minutes.
Victoria Nava, followed by Gary Hall.
Okay. I'm here because we are experiencing...
Ms. Nava, can you pull the microphone down, please? Thank you.
We are experiencing a lot of traffic in our neighborhood with these dreadful gardens located on Inos and Miller due to tenants from Casia Apartments and Arbor Bridge. They're using our neighborhood to park their vehicles all the time. Not only park, they also eat and drink on their cars, leaving trash all over the place. We are experiencing theft on our property, which has been reported. Campers, there is a camper with people sleeping on there for two weeks. It's on Inos across from Barrow School. And a car with a flat tire for more than three months. The people just move the car back and forth, and it's been reported also, and no action taken. If we're not taking, also residents putting their trashcans in front of their property because they're parked in front of their houses. I think if we're not taking action now, very soon we will experience criminality and a decided place to live. Therefore, our properties will be devaluated. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Stillwell, did you get that information so that we can check on that? Thank you very much.
And Madam Mayor, I did bring those issues to Mr. Stillwell already with the complaints from the neighbors, and so he is in code compliance, I believe, is working on that right now.
Okay, thank you. Gary Hall, followed by Jennifer McMurrayne, followed by Claire Weinman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Gary Hall, and I'm a resident of the Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Home Team, or NSBIT, which is an organization affiliated with the Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League. NSBIT promotes the general welfare of mobile and manufactured homeowners in North Santa Barbara County. For nearly three years, NSBIT has pursued the introduction and implementation of enforceable manufactured home rent stabilization in Santa Maria. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the residents and homeowners of the 1,551 manufactured homes located in Santa Maria's 14 manufactured home parks. We continue to ask for action that will, one, correct the failure of the inform voluntary model lease program of 1999, two, end the excessive rent increases that have become routine over the last 19 years, three, protect the manufactured homeowners from any future predatory manufactured home park owners, and four, help maintain affordable housing for seniors and low-income citizens who remain vulnerable to the rising cost of living here in Santa Maria. We feel we are finally making some progress. Three rent stabilization stakeholder meetings, including city representatives, park owners, and homeowners, have been held this year. City Manager Stillwell announced at the May 7 City Council Meeting that the city has agreed to pursue an enforceable model lease 2020 program. A fourth stakeholder meeting is scheduled June 26. We have recommended a meeting agenda that includes, one, the establishment of a 2019 timetable for adoption and implementation of enforceable model lease 2020; two, the identification of what key lease provisions should be included in enforceable model lease 2020; three, definition of the means for enforcement of enforceable model lease 2020; and four, identify the schedule of required activities, including task assignments and responsible persons. We, the homeowners, remain hopeful and cautiously optimistic that an appropriate balance can be established between space rent affordability and fair return on investment to the park owner. That balance has been demonstrated in jurisdictions all over our state, and we feel that now is the time for it to exist in Santa Maria. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer McMurrayne, followed by Claire Weinman.
Hello and good evening. My name is Jennifer McMurrayne, and I'm here to speak on the matter of the conditions of the bus stops on Foster Road and the need for improvements. As a resident of Santa Maria and a recipient of mental health services, I understand the importance of safe and easy access to mental health services. Managing mental illness is a full-time job. In order to successfully work a mental health wellness plan, clients need to be able to access care reliably and with the same ease as one using public transportation to access medical doctor appointments or local hospitals. It is my understanding that the City Council has agreed to make some improvements by adding a bench for the number six stop on Foster Road, which is much appreciated. However, I would like to ask that additional improvements be made by adding an awning to protect clients from the elements, and by installing a flashing crosswalk so clients may cross the road safely. I drive that stretch of Foster Road almost daily to commute between Orchid and Guadalupe, and can attest to how fast traffic flows and how difficult it is to see people on the side of the road waiting to cross. At the City Council meeting held on May 21 for another matter concerning disabled and mentally, the disabled and mentally ill, I had the privilege of being present and hearing Madam Patino say that you were not in favor of the proposed housing project, in part because you did not feel it was right for disabled and mentally ill clients to have to walk seven minutes or approximately half a mile to the nearest bus stop. And I hope that you, as well as the other council members, will see here that it is, again, not in the best interest of disabled mentally ill clients to stand in the dark, the rain, or to cross an unlet road with traffic that travels at a high rate of speed. It is of the utmost importance that we ensure the safety of special needs clients, and because of this, I ask you to please allocate the necessary funds to further the improvements of the bus stops on Foster Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Claire Weinman, followed by Denise Gonzalez, followed by Kathy Ortiz.
Good evening. My name is Claire Weinman. I'm the president of the Grower Shipper Association of Santa Barbara and San Luis bespoke counties. We sincerely appreciate the efforts of the City Council and staff through this process. We've all learned a lot and come together as a community to ask thoughtful questions and balance multiple needs. The implementation details we identified on June 4th remain a concern. We are hopeful that the ordinance is implemented in good faith and consistent with the council's intent and all applicable law, and we will continue to support our members as the ordinance is implemented. In the spirit of compromise and after extensive consideration by our members, we remain true to our word that we are willing to concede a tenant displacement fee and the amount of three months of current rent for the unit in the event that the tenant will be displaced by the conversion of the unit to employee housing in R1, R2, and R3. We appreciate the council's consideration of the association's comments on the employee housing ordinance and recognizing the distinctions between the different zones in the city. We thank the council for your responsiveness to our comments and thoughtfulness on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Gonzalez, followed by Kathy Ortiz, followed by Sarah McDonald.
Good afternoon. Just as fellow city member here, chair earlier, I was also here in the May 20 meeting for the bus stop advocacy. I represent Santa Barbara County's Department of Behavioral Wellness, and I do appreciate the initiative that was taken to put the bench in place, and I appreciate Ms. Councilwoman Gloria Soto for keeping us in the loop for that. But my staff and the clients at the mental health clinic wanted to maybe project like an estimated amount of time as far as how long that would take, and then if we would be updated in the future about any further development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Ortiz.
Oh. Is there an estimated time for the bus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Soto. So the, we are ready to move forward. The project is scheduled to be funded with the adoption of the council's budget tonight, and we'll be able to get to work and have it installed notably quickly this summer.
Kathy Ortiz, followed by Sarah McDonald.
Good evening, and first I want to say how grateful I am to be here tonight, and thank you for your quick action on the bus stop and helping it become better over there at Foster Road. I'm also here to speak about that tonight. Again, I just want to say thank you for your quick action on the matter, but there really does, we're really wanting and needing to have more done over there at Foster Road. Having an awning there for people's safety would really make a huge difference, just for when they're waiting, when the weather's inclement, when it starts getting dark a lot earlier here in town, and then also the flashing crossing, a crosswalk that has the flashing lights like we have over here just downtown, because the speed limit is very fast there, 40 miles an hour, and quite often they're going a lot faster than that. I know this because like I've come here and said before, I'm a former client of Foster Road Mental Health. I went there for many years, and I got a lot of help that I needed. But there was a time when I was standing out there in the rain for over an hour in the mud, you know, waiting on that bus to get there in the dark. In the fall, it gets dark rather early here, and so there's oftentimes people are waiting on that road in the dark, and then trying to cross it in the dark when you can't be seen is a very tough thing to do, and it's very scary, and it's one of the things that does keep people from being able to go to their appointments. For me, it kept me out of my appointments for almost a month because I got sick after that one time standing in there in the rain. And I know it happens, but if we could just give some special help to some people over there that are really trying hard to get better, just like I was when I was there, thank you so much.
Thank you. Sarah McDonald, followed by Pam Gates.
Good evening. I'm Sarah McDonald. I'm from the League of Women Voters Observer Corps, and I'm observing your meeting tonight, and I hope to see some exciting things tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Gates, followed by, it's Olga S.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I was unable to attend the last council meeting due to a prior commitment, but was alerted by a friend the next day that a person was allowed to make hateful and threatening comments during the public comment period. After watching the meeting video online, I must say I was angry, appalled, and shocked. For those who may not know what I'm referring to, Councilmember Soto had just read the city's proclamation marking June as Pride Month, and members of the LGBTQ+ community spoke in English and in Spanish about what this meant to them. It was very moving. The first open comment was from a woman referring to the H-2A ordinance, asking for all Santamarians to now come back together, no more fighting. Unfortunately, that was followed by a second speaker who began by quoting scripture, and then asked the mayor and council members, "Why are you choosing to celebrate sexual perversion?" He then proposed a new city ordinance, and I am quoting him, homosexuality, lesbianism, et cetera, should once again be a felony. And while looking at those who had just been given the proclamation, he said, "In fact, these evils should be death penalty crimes." Why is someone allowed to threaten people at a city council meeting? My friend Gail has already commented on what the rules are according to public comment, your rules. I do not feel those were followed. While the U.S. Supreme Court has repeatedly ruled that hate speech is legally free speech under the First Amendment, the American Bar Association defines hate speech as "any speech that offends, threatens, or insults groups based on race, color, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, or other traits." The people who received the Pride Month proclamation are my friends. They are kind, caring people, and they should not have to be afraid in their own city. And when speech like this is allowed to go unchallenged, it is scary. Let's celebrate the diversity that is Santa Maria. I invite everyone to join me on June 29 at the Third Annual Pride Celebration and Resource Fair at Town Center West. It's free and family-friendly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Olga S.
Good afternoon. I would like to echo what was being said this afternoon regarding the bus stop. As a worker for Santa Maria Behavioral Wellness, I work with clients that have struggled with mental illness. Many of the clients that I work with have expressed the struggles that they face in regards to getting to their groups, their doctor's appointments, their therapy appointments. The delay in the bus is about an hour to two hours of wait, and as it was said earlier that sometimes when it's raining, clients are left out in the rain, or when it's hot, they're left out in the sun, standing. We are thankful that a bench has been ordered or is going to be placed, but we would continue to advocate to be able to have a safer crossing, which with flashing lights. And also, we do also want to thank the Santa Maria SMAT staff, Martha, who went out and met with us to hear us out. So again, just continuing to echo what was said earlier and advocating for change to address this. address this. It is for the benefit for the clients and everybody because this will prevent clients from not going to their appointments, not getting medications or services needed, which will save the city more money on the long run because it would prevent them from decompensating and being 51-50, which officers are called out to have to provide support. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, Mr. Selwell, did you wish to make any comments?
Sure, Madam Mayor. To summarize the comments spoken by Ms. Nova regarding the parking on Eagle, Enoz, and Miller that Councilmember Waterfield mentioned as well, we are working, we did speak with Ms. Nova this morning, we're working to resolve that problem over there in that neighborhood. And with the speakers, including Ms. Santos there, we have the SMAT, the bus staff happen meeting with the folks on the Foster Road area. We have a proposal to improve that bus stop, and it's in tonight's budget. If approved by council, we'll keep doing the work on that. And then I appreciate Gary Hall's status update on the home, the model lease 2020, enforceable model lease, and we concur with his status update. That concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Madam?
Yes.
Mr. Selwell, can you, in the, I don't know how to ask the question, but regarding, can you make, can you comment regarding, or can you respond to the comments made regarding the hateful comments that were made at the last council meeting?
Again, sorry about that. We acknowledge and recognize that in the political context and in the religious context, speech is to be provided the widest breadth of availability, and we do acknowledge that Mr. Rademacher's comments were right, literally at the edge of propriety. We endeavor to provide a fair and open forum for our community members to be heard, and we will continually try and monitor those situations. And again, we did what we could do to provide a safe environment for our community. But we acknowledge that there is times where it gets overboard, and we'll try and thread that needle.
You know, Ms. Soto, that is not to say that, we know that words can be very hurtful. People say things at that podium many times that are hurtful to other people in our community as well as, you know, to ourselves up here. I mean, we're called all kinds of names, but maybe it's because we put our necks out that, you know, it doesn't resonate as much. To be rude and mean and say things that are terrible is not against the law.
Right. I just want to make sure everybody here feels safe. This is our home.
I agree. I agree. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have anything they wish to pull for discussion?
I want to pull item 3D and vote on that separately.
Okay. Anything else? None? Okay.
If not, I go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent calendar without item 3D.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 3D. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, can you read 3D?
Yes. Item 3D is to conduct a second reading and adopt ordinance number 201904, amending Title 12, City of Santa Maria Municipal Code to Defying Employee Housing, add employee housing as allowed use in select residential districts, reorganize Chapter 1235 to establish provisions for employee housing, amend time limits of discretionary permits, establish zoning administrator hearing process, and permit ministerial approval of employee housing units existing as of the effective date if certain conditions are met.
Ms. Waterfield?
I don't want to call for a motion because...
No, I thought you wanted, did you want to comment?
Oh, no, no, yes. What I wanted to do was go ahead and vote separately because I truly feel that R1 zoning gets preferential treatment, and I feel that it should be the same in R1, R2, and R3. So, if someone wants to approve that.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 3D.
A second.
So we moved in second to approve 3D. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
No.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Now we have a presentation by Utilities Director, Mr. Springer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. It's a privilege for me to get to come to talk tonight about our department and the great employees that you have working in the Water Resources Division. The Water Resources Division of the Utilities Department provides water and sewer service to the residents and businesses of Santa Maria. This includes acquiring, trading, and delivering quality potable water, collecting and treating that wastewater upon its use, and maintaining and improving stormwater facilities. With an annual budget of $45 million, the Water Resources Division is comprised of two groups, water and wastewater. These are further broken down, as can be seen on the slide, into production and distribution in the water system and collections and treatment on the wastewater side. In the Water Resources Division, we have 32 dedicated and professional employees, 25 of those holding certified certificates of operations, sorry. This small staff provides around-the-clock operations of the system. They are responsible for protecting the public health and safety of Santa Marians. They meet all federal and state regulations with respect to permit requirements, and they are also first responders. These are people that we have out all night long during heavy rain events. When there's hit hydrants, they're out there with the police and fire, closing off those valves, and we sent several crews down to Montecito to help them rebuild their community after that terrible event last winter. Water and sewer service is really frontline protection of a modern society. Sanitation is key to disease prevention. Having adequate fire supply allows for urban density, and it must be reliable all day, every It's a complicated system. We're highly regulated. On this slide alone, in the background, there are 17 different regulations shown from only the top five regulatory agencies. There are many more. These particular facilities have regulations at every level of government, both local, state, and federal. In addition to complicated regulations, the system has complex operating parameters. Production staff blend state water and groundwater to meet an 11 million gallon a day average, but this varies widely throughout the year based on the weather and various demands. Projecting demands to meet not just average but peak hour, peak day, providing adequate fire supply, looking at the blend required for the groundwater and the state water, chemical dosing, reservoir filling, agent quality of water, these are all things that production staff deal with every day. Not only is it a complicated system, it's big. The distribution system for water, 339 miles of mains that lie with, under the streets in Santa Maria, that equates to about 1.8 million feet of water line under our feet every day as we go through Santa Maria. So maintaining, flushing, exercising the valves, repairing leaks are all important things that those crews do, in addition to providing customer service to nearly 23,000 meters and accounts. On the wastewater side, staff collects and treats an average of 7.5 million gallons a day. And much like water, it does vary in quantity and strength, and the strength can be based on whether or not there's ag production facilities as they process fruits and vegetables in the area. It adds to our wastewater flows. Collections, very much like the waterside, 345 miles is just shy of 1.25 million feet of sewer line. These require careful monitoring and constant maintenance. That includes videoing and cleaning to minimize sewer overflows and provide service. At the wastewater plant, we provide treatment for the wastewater, including handling of the biosolids and treated effluent disposal, all of this while maintaining all the mechanical and biological processes of a wastewater treatment plant that was originally built in the 1930s.
And with one lift station?
Yeah, only one lift station in the system. So with a combined total of over 3.5 million feet of pipe beneath the streets and tens of thousands, tens of thousands of related appurtenances, the total value of the infrastructure that the City of Santa Maria controls is staggering. That number is rapidly approaching $1 billion. When we look at that value, it's important to maintain that existing infrastructure, plan for replacement of that aging infrastructure, and prepare for growth. With a value of $1 billion, there is an annual budget of approximately $45 million for water and wastewater. The budgeting process helps us to plan for these various demands and to look to the future. So I've told you the system is big and complicated. Well, here's where it gets bigger and more complicated. Staff evaluates the needs on an ongoing basis, taking into account a myriad of parameters such as the age or useful life and other factors when we look at the facilities we currently own and operate. And on the slide there, you'll see a list of various types of infrastructure that we own both on the water and the wastewater side. We take that information and we put together a capital improvement plan that takes together that existing information related to ongoing maintenance, repair, expected life, and that sort of thing, and we boil it all down to what we call a capital improvement plan. This is a developed project list that's utilized to anticipate funding needs over, we usually use at least a 10-year horizon. These expenses are placed into a pro forma or a rate model that we have to evaluate the revenues, expenditures, and cash flow. It's important for us that not just when those expenses happen, but when they happen so that we ensure that we have adequate funds to take care of these rising needs. This is important for us to make sure that we have revenues available, but it's also important for the customer and the ratepayer to have a consistency in expectation of what the rates will be moving forward. Some of the capital projects that are aggregated in this list that you can see over the next five years include things like a sewer main upgrade that is in the neighborhood of $4 million, doing digester gas line replacement at the wastewater plant to the tune of $800,000, as well as some miscellaneous sludge bed upgrades and storm drain improvement. So the projects all end with at least three zeros. It is expensive to maintain and operate. So I mentioned that it's getting bigger and more complicated. The last slide talked about bigger. This is where it gets a little more complicated. So I talked a little bit about the infrastructure needs, very, very briefly, and I would love to talk about this for hours, but I suspect you have other things on your mind. Infrastructure and capital needs and how we go through that, in addition to that, those are the things we can predict and control to some degree. But there are additional pressures on the department and on the city that we have very little control over, and those are listed there on the slide. And we looked at increased regulations at a state and federal level. And all of us have heard over the last couple of years about the terrible situation that happened in Flint, Michigan, and we have additional regulations that come down. Basically, if you hear about something bad happening with public infrastructure anywhere nationwide, you can guarantee there's going to be some additional rules coming down that the city will need to comply with. So there are increased regulations at a state and federal level. There are additional pressures on state water reliability. These include issues in the delta with respect to levees, endangered species. Many of you have heard about the issue that happened at Oroville Dam two winters ago where there was a significant failure, that project. The dam is on the state water project, so in some way, all the way down to Santa Maria, 400 and some miles away, city ratepayers will have some responsibility for those expenses. In addition, we're dealing with staffing pressures. Public Employee Reform Act puts some pressure on us. We have an aging workforce where we look at retirement. As I mentioned before, we do have 25 highly qualified, trained, and certified staff, but it's important for us to be able to continue to recruit and retain that trained and qualified staff, and that becomes increasingly difficult in a competitive market. Conservation, we absolutely appreciate. This community did a great job in stepping up and conserving water during the drought as we asked them to do, but when you're in the water sales business, if there's water not going through the meters, it affects revenue. So those are additional pressures. Litigation is a constant pressure for us. The groundwater litigation that happened in Santa Maria over the years, we are still paying for lawyers on that, and there are appeals and actions going on pretty much continually with respect to the stipulation, the adjudication. There are other pressures. There are existing lawsuits from Steelhead where they are interested in acquiring water out of Twitchell Reservoir, which the city holds water rights to, which is a threat to the ability of the city to continue to provide quality water, as well as expenses related to the old litigation, for example, the Twitchell Management Authority of which the city is a member. And then the other issue with legal courses, just ongoing intensifications of interpretation of Proposition 218. That was an amendment to the state constitution which governs how cities can really set rates with respect to their utilities, both water and sewer. And it seems each year there's a new case that goes before the Supreme Court, and the ability for cities to achieve multiple goals with their rate setting becomes more complicated. So with those, I guess that's what's up, and now what's next? So we have, staff has been working for a couple of years with a consultant to complete a cost of service and rate study with all those pressures I discussed, in addition to the rate models and the pro forma. This is the first time in a couple of years that the city has gone out to get an independent study. We do have staff in-house in utilities, and we have great staff also in the finance department that helps us out with budgeting and keeping track of numbers and revenues literally on a daily basis. But it was important for us to go out and particularly with the Proposition 218 requirements that have come online with the San Juan Capistrano case, that we get somebody from the outside to take a look and verify that we're doing things right. I'm happy to say that we are doing things right, but from that, we expect an updated pro forma and rate models very soon. With that, we'll get aggregated projections on all that information I talked about. It goes in the pro forma, and from that, we'll work on new sewer and water rates that will be developed. After that, we'll start following all the legal requirements I mentioned as part of Prop 218, which includes notifying people. We'll have workshops, give people an opportunity for protest as required, and then we intend to bring those proposed rate adjustments to the council for action in the future, probably early fall. So really, this presentation was about giving you a very brief snapshot on the infrastructure because it is underground and not seen, and frankly, Shannon Sweeney's here in the office. She's our Water Resources Manager. She will be very upset with me for calling her out in public, but she and her staff do a fantastic job. It's complicated, it's hard, and they make it look easy. So I'm excited tonight to present to you that it's, they make it look easy, but it is not easy, and water and sewer services are the foundation necessary for a modern society. The utility staff is committed to a financially responsible local government, one that is cost-conscious and concerned about the effective and efficient delivery of these services to Santa Maria, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions with Mr. Springer?
I don't have any questions, but just comments, just to look at the infrastructure of the City of Santa Maria to put into perspectives. Not too long ago, we had a gentleman going over our roadways, and our investment in that was $1 billion. Those roadways we see, and then you look at the underground investments that we have, which is another billion dollars. So we've got $2 billion right there that we up here have to balance out in a budget to make sure that everything is maintained and the roads are maintained, the water, the underground infrastructure is maintained. So I appreciate the hard facts, I guess, and it's just something that you, we do lose sleep over, so just wanted to bring that out.
Mr. Cordero?
Chad, it's just, it's a great presentation. It's succinct, and you used very few words to talk about a very big project, as Ms. Waterfield was saying, so thank you very much for the report.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Springer. So if you haven't had the opportunity to go out to the wastewater, and Shannon, I'm sure, would love to give you a tour and keep you longer than you really need to. Anyway, it's really a good tour, and it's very, very educational. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will hear protests related to 2019, 2020 annual assessments for the cities for landscape maintenance districts Northwest, Northeast, Southwest, South Miller, Street, South College Drive, and the 24 associated special benefit zones.
Staff report is being made by Director of Recreation and Parks, Mr. Posada. Staff report is to be made by Director of Recreation and Parks, Mr. Posada.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Thank you for considering this item tonight. This is our annual update to the landscape district assessment fees. Tonight, you'll be considering four resolutions that have been prepared by the city attorney's office and the city engineer. Back in June, you had the opportunity to review the, June 4th, you had the opportunity to review the engineer's report that was presented for public comment. One of the things that we try and do, just like Director Springer was saying on the utility side, is it's maintenance-driven. All of our landscape is alive. It's all over town. I think we have a lot of programs that benefit from the landscaping in the community. We have some really nice boulevards, we have some nice parks. All of them are part of the landscape maintenance district program. So on the assessments tonight, what you're looking at are resolutions that will increase the assessment this year by the CPI, which is 3.2%, I believe. And when you consider the city being as large as Director Springer just mentioned, we have 24 special benefit zones, so that really are 24 neighborhoods in the city who are assessed for their landscaping. Then you have the four master districts, which are geographically the northeast, northwest, southeast, and southwest districts, and they all have their own particular theme of landscaping. And so the idea is that a landscape maintenance assessment district due to California Streets and Highway Code allows a way for cities to collect assessments through property tax, through the property tax system, to provide for the perpetual maintenance of those areas. So it's not, it's not a burden on the general fund. It's a burden that is placed on those individuals who live within those areas and get a special benefit. The other side of that is the city does provide an overall benefit for those other residents that are in the city who don't belong to a landscape district, and that's called a general benefit, and that number is about $700,000. Overall, the districts collect about $3.9 million. That money is used to maintain the landscaping, pay for water, anything that's damaged in a car accident, which we've had several of them lately, all those funds are used to replace those damaged infrastructure that we have. The other thing that we're able to do with this is plan for renovations. If you look around the city, especially in the southeast district, it's an older district. There's a lot of those areas that need to be renovated, so city staff goes in and does those renovations using these funds. The bulk of our maintenance is handled by a private contractor in town, and they bid that contract every four to five years, and we're entering into our, the last year of this contract is in 2020. And so we've had great results from our contractor, that is the J.D. Hume Company, and has been the successful bidder for at least the last three or four cycles. So with that, I have the resolutions here. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and that will complete my report.
Any questions of Mr. Posada?
I do not. You know, if everyone, if no one has questions, I'd like to go with the resolution.
Well, one minute. Do we have any written correspondence?
We have no written communications on this item. We'll need to open the public hearing.
So I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Okay.
Madam Mayor, do I, do I need to individually make each resolution, or can I just do?
You can do it all together.
Do it all together? Okay.
Unless our attorney stops me, but...
I'm good? Okay, we're all good.
You're good.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming the diagram and assessment rates for the northeast Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, the Northwest Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, the Southwest Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, and the South Miller Street College Drive Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, and its associated special benefit zones, and all of the associate benefits zones for fiscal year 2019, '20.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I won't repeat that. Any further discussion? Harry Nunn, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Next order of business is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider making amendments to the 2019-20 cycle budget.
And the staff report is to be made by manager, City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. The city council adopted a biannual budget last June, and this July will mark the first day of the second year of the adopted budget. The council updates that two-year budget before the start of the year each year to reflect economic changes, change in revenues, change in services. This year, it's a more significant update than in years past because next year marks the first year that we'll have new Measure U funding. The topics for discussion tonight, we'll take a look at the economic factors, look at the general fund revenues, the proposed amendments. The big issue really driving our future financial condition will be CalPERS cost increases, so we'll spend some time digging into that a bit. We also had certain items that were unable to fund that we want to highlight for the council, and we recommend bringing those back in the first quarter, and then public input and comment, and any direction from council, and hopefully adoption of the budget by the end of this agenda item tonight. So nationally, we have a 50-year-low unemployment rate of 3.6%. Labor market's looking more upbeat than it has been compared to the 9% unemployment rate eight years ago. Locally, the Santa Maria unemployment rate has declined to 6.2%. Again, that's the lowest it's been since prior to the Great Recession. As you may have heard at the Economic Forecast Project, there's no prediction of a recession out there. There are some indicators that certain economists think might be forecasting an upcoming recession, and for comparison purposes, the Santa Barbara County budget they just adopted this month forecasts a recession in 2021. As far as our revenues, we have strong consumer confidence. It's pushing our sales tax to all-time highs. Although it doesn't show, it's steadily increasing there, we do anticipate $23 billion in sales tax in 2019-20, and the fluctuation you see on the chart is because of the difficulties the state has had in collecting and remitting revenues rather than fluctuations on retail sales. They have a new collection and remittance system, and that had not been working properly. They're working out the bugs on that, but we have seen steady growth of sales tax revenue. Property tax, we also continue to see steady growth in property tax since the Great Recession. The Great Recession had a devastating impact on the city's property values, and the housing market continues to remain strong. We also have steady hotel tax revenue, the TOT, transient occupancy tax. That's benefiting from SantamariaValley.com, which is our destination marketing effort, and the addition of new hotel rooms. Our traveler market is also diversified, so we not only have the business travelers coming to Santa Maria as we've historically had, and we've also, we also continue to benefit from the folks who stop in Santa Maria for the night, traveling along Highway 101, but we also have grown our market having Santa Maria itself as a destination primarily for wine tasting and events, and also it's growing as an affordable home-based destination for people who want to stay in Santa Maria but then spend some time with recreation or activities regionally. And we also continue to have the NHIS revenue as a primary general fund revenue, at least for the near future. This is the non-hazardous hydrocarbon impacted soil that we receive general fund revenue for, and it'll, we only have a certain amount of capacity to accept this soil, and it depends on the companies trucking it to us. So it's a fluctuating revenue. We are anticipating it being higher next year, higher than where we budgeted. So the budget last year was $400,000. We're anticipating a million in NHIS revenue next year based on an estimated actual this year of 1.3. So the, overall, the total general fund revenues in 2019-20 are anticipated to be $69 million. That's approximately $67,000 less than previously anticipated, but the vast majority of the decrease is the sales tax revenue as a result of the state collections getting back on schedule. On the spending side, the variance between the previously adopted 1920 budget the council adopted a year ago and this amendment is $4.5 million. And as you recall, the adopted budget had a structural deficit of $8.5 million, meaning that the ongoing costs have been increasing faster than our ongoing revenues, and we've been using reserves to maintain services. So those services that do not have ongoing funding have either been reduced or now have ongoing funding through Measure U per the city council's direction this last March. And the structural deficit we have proposed in this upcoming year's budget is now $4.1 million, and we are also aware that the cost will, the cost increases will continue to outpace revenue increases for several years to come primarily as a result of rising personnel So the $4.1 million financial gap, we are closing with three ways, using three ways to close that. One is the council in the budget adopted, the two-year budget adopted last year, proposed or adopted the budget using about $1.1 million draw from the LEAF, so we're continuing to keep that in place. We also anticipate, or will work to achieve, about $2.2, $2.3 million in expenditure savings. That's primarily salary savings by holding vacancies a little longer after someone separates before we recruit and fill that position. There's also other expenditure savings that we can achieve through the year with other cost savings with contracts and materials and supplies. And then we have future cost allocations, and what that is, is as the Measure U staffing ramps up, there will be increased support for those folks who come and provide the work as funded by Measure U, and the support will entail HR people, human resource people to hire and recruit and work on the HR side to support the new employees with payroll and benefits, things like that. Also, a higher increase in IT and computer support folks, and so those are costs that the general fund bears now but will be future cost allocated by Measure U, and so we've accounted for that as a way to close the gap. And, you know, just briefly, so the way to close the gap there, so 27% of the gap is closed from the LEAF, 56% from maintaining vacancies, those expenditure savings, and 17% by the future cost allocation. And a snapshot of the LEAF, so again, we're not drawing any additional funds from the LEAF other than what was already adopted by the city council. Our goal in developing the budget is to follow the council's direction to maintain a balanced budget and provide services that can be funded within our available ongoing revenue. The budget is balanced, but does not have funding to add to the LEAF, and we also don't have funding in the budget for additional deferred capital maintenance, more savings for known future pension cost increases. The council does have an adopted policy that calls for any ending fund balance surplus to be set aside to the LEAF, to invest in capital improvements, and to set aside for future pension costs. And last year, we were able to contribute $165,000 to each of those three because we ended the year $496,000 better than expected. And we'll continue with this, with that policy until changed by the council. If there is any surplus at the end of the year, then it will go to, it'll be divided three ways between the LEAF, investing in our capital such as our buildings and facilities, or setting it aside in our pension reserve. The big change in this year's budget is the addition of Measure U, and this chart is in the staff report. The summary of it, though, is, so it's implementing the direction we received by the city council last March, which is 90% of all Measure U appropriations to be public safety-related, 5% for youth include additional staff for teen programs, funding for teen transportation, additional youth services in the library, and a minor remodel in the library learning center. Also, 5% for quality of life. Those programs include additional code compliance, park service officers, and efforts to address Measure U by category, we have nine point, we're proposing in this next year's budget $9.1 million for additional police, $6.9 million in the fire department, $2 million for recreation and parks, $700,000 for the library, $378,000 in the city attorney's office for code compliance, or, let me see, and then funding in the city manager's office again for the, primarily for, this is for the reverse 911 outreach, and then for the finance department, $108,000 again for the support for staff and to provide additional internal controls, and $20,000 in community development. And that's to support community events such as Downtown Friday. The proposed amendments for, or the overall appropriations for all operating funds are recommended to be $222 million. The previous budget was $198 million, so that's $23.7 million more for operations in this upcoming year than was anticipated in the two-year budget. And all operating funds consist of the general fund, Measure U, and all three enterprise funds and special revenue funds. Appropriations for all funds, which include the operating funds plus landscape maintenance districts, the capital funds, and internal service funds, are anticipated to be $258.8 million or $26.5 million increase over the previously adopted budget. A quick look at the appropriation for the enterprise funds, so water resources at $50 million, solid waste $50 million, and we have public transit and radio and technology. And those are the four primary enterprise funds that we run as business funds essentially where we collect rates and fees and special revenue in order to provide those specific services of water, solid waste, public transit, sewer, and radio and technology. As far as the staffing, the proposed budget authorizes full-time, 570 full-time employees. We have 53 new full-time employees, four new part-time employees. Of those, 36 are direct Measure U, either full-time or part-time, and 10 of them are the support for the Measure U staffing through the general fund. That'll have the future cost allocation. As I mentioned at the outset, there are certain items that are not able to be funded in the budget. Again, we're working to maintain a balanced budget, and we want to highlight these five areas that aren't included in the budget. They are two police sergeants and one police lieutenant for $676,000, six additional firefighters, opening the community centers six days a week for four hours a day in additional time, general plan update of $300,000, and funding for the mayor's task force coordinating with the community partners. And we propose on these to defer these items until the first quarter report, and there's a few reasons for that. One is we want to make sure our revenue estimates are online and see where the revenue really, how the revenue really does materialize as we enter into the new fiscal year, especially with the state's troubles with allocating sales tax. Also, most of these have specific grants and other financial requests, so it'll give us some time to see how the grants play out, whether we do get the SAFER grant. Last council meeting, the council authorized the city to pursue an SB2 grant for our general plan, and then the mayor's task force deferment will give us a chance to get the staff on board, work with the community groups, and figure out the best way to spend that additional funding to provide the community partnerships. As far as the big issues, so the elephant in the room really is CalPERS. This slide's an illustration of the city's CalPERS-related expenses with the yellow bar being the general fund expenditure amounts, the blue bar being all the non-general bar being the general fund expenditure amounts, the blue bar being all the non-general fund employee expenses such as water, solid waste, wastewater, and the street funds. So we paid $13.2 million in CalPERS pension-related expenses overall, or 17% of the general fund budget in 2018-19, ending this June 30th. And to put that in perspective, back in 2006, 2007, the city contributed $5.4 million to CalPERS. The city projects our CalPERS payments rising 28% in fiscal year 1920, up to $16.2 million. And the following fiscal years, CalPERS costs are projected to go up 9% or additional $1.1 million to 17 and a half million dollars by 2022, '23, CalPERS.
Mr. Stillwell, one minute, Ms. Waterfield has a question.
I thought at one point we were almost on top of CalPERS, that in a few short years we were going to break even. Is this something that has changed from Sacramento and they're re-calculating something that is throwing us all out of proportion?
That is the very next slide. It's a very good question. So, yes, so we, the primary cost increase we're seeing from 2000, when I mentioned 2006, 2007 was 5.4 million, up to where we are now with 17 million. That was primarily a result of the investment losses that CalPERS experienced in 2008 with the Great Recession. I mean, there's other factors in play by expanding people living longer and different other variables, changes of the pension rates and the pension plans, but really that stock market loss was just devastating and we're experiencing that. And so, yes, we received a report a couple of weeks ago that there is new information that, or new policies CalPERS has adopted that will impact our costs going forward. And from their point of view, it's to solidify CalPERS and make it more stable. The impact on cities or all the agencies in CalPERS is a significant cost increase. And so the four drivers on that that are on this slide is, so they're changing the amortization period from 30 years to 20 years, and they're also not meeting their investment returns. They've lowered their discount rate. They realize they're not making a seven and a half percent increase, or a seven and a half percent investment rate, and they've lowered that. And the employer paid contributions are increasing, all those impact the employer paid contributions. And so that's, those are being installed over time with the full impact in 2024. So whereas, you're right, in the previous forecast, we saw that the significant growth in CalPERS costs would somewhat level off in 2024, we now see that growth curve continuing to increase. And it's going to be very impactful for Santa Maria and all the agencies that are in CalPERS.
Well, absolutely, and there isn't any equation that Sacramento will stick to to make sure that the cities can balance themselves out and level off. So the weaker cities, when you look at amortization from 20, from 30 to 20 years, the weakest cities are going to completely check out.
It'll be devastating.
It will be.
Yeah, and that again, to the next slide. I mean, so we're working with the League of Cities in Sacramento with the Sacramento legislators, legislators, the state generally, and with CalPERS. And, you know, part of the issue again, as you've mentioned, so there's a disconnect with their focus on securing CalPERS for the future and recognizing that the 30, whether they're looking at a 30-year amortization, 20-year amortization. And there's a disconnect between that and the cities who are really looking year to year, in some cases month to month, and how we're going to continue to provide the services that we need to provide. And so the League of Cities has been meeting with folks up in Sacramento about these issues. And so part of the disconnect is, so the, I'll go through them. So the cities provide the most direct public services, so we have the most employees that are charged to a general fund. The state has multiple funding sources and mixed intergovernmental revenues, fee-based revenues, that shield the CalPERS growth impact from the state relative to the cities. The cities have uncertain future revenue. Anyway, the revenues I highlighted, really it's those four revenues that drive most of our ability to provide the services. And those are all have certain threats around them as well, primarily with sales tax. You see, you know, online shopping and, you know, e-commerce and the way they allocate sales tax, all those things can change and impact that primary revenue of ours. And of course, property tax revenue is constrained, and so we don't have the revenue flexibility the state does. Cities receive now very little revenue intergovernmentally. We used to have CDPG block grants. We used to have redevelopment funds available to us, and those aren't available to cities anymore. We have regional pressures, so we're in a competitive environment. If we just slashed unilaterally the services or the employee salaries that we provide, the employees are, you know, they're free to work in another 481 cities in the state, right? So we're in a competitive environment where we really need to work together to solve this issue. You know, the city has, the percent of its state budget is a lot less, or the city's overall budget is a lot less obviously than the state's, and so our impact of CalPERS cost increases are more acute. And again, it's not about 30 years, it's about really how we're going to be able to fund services, you know, now and in the very near future. And I think it's important for the league to continue to have this conversation because, you know, the CalPERS growth impacts are not hitting the state budget the way they are in the cities. And Councilmember Waterfield's correct, in the next few years with these cost increases, some of the cities that are struggling financially now may be pushed over the brink, and I wouldn't be surprised if of the 482 cities, there are a number of them that are unable to pay this cost increase, and that'll be a very major impact to those communities and to the employees in those cities. And I can talk a little bit more, I'll go through, but basically since CalPERS is such a big impact for our future, we have a few more discussion points around that here. So how CalPERS is funded, so, and it goes back to Councilmember Waterfield's point, so 59% of CalPERS funding should be through its investment. And so what that does then is allow the cities to pay only, not only, but pay 28 cents, 28% of the cost of providing the employee pensions, and 13% then is on the employees. And that employee portion is set by statute, by state law. We can negotiate with our employee groups, but really when CalPERS doesn't make the 59 cents, it hits the cities and the agencies, and that 28 cents increases. And that's what we're seeing over time here.
Does the 13% ever change then?
We can negotiate it to change, and we have with our employee groups, but it's set by state law.
Okay. But it can only go as far as 13, as high as 13?
Employees can pay the employer's share if we negotiate that.
Okay.
And just as far as, I don't mean to get too far in the weeds, but just kind of, there's four real big parts here that we're talking about. So the first is the Public Employee Retirement Fund. So the city of Santa Maria is with 3,000 other state agencies, cities, and special districts and counties that are in CalPERS, and they pool us all into the perf, they call it. And that's where they're able to get, they're able to leverage investments by pooling all the money, much as we pool all of our different revenues as well. We have our $200 million investment portfolio, which is not all money that we can spend on, or it's earmarked on what we can spend it on, but we pool it for investment purposes. And as we talked about, the amortization period, so that's shortening from 30 years to 20 years. It strengthens the overall CalPERS system, but it costs a lot more. Think of your mortgage, you know, if you pay a 15-year mortgage versus a 30-year mortgage, you'll have the mortgage paid down and more financial stability, but it costs a lot more to get there. And the actuarial assumptions I touched on a bit, so, you know, they continue to look at what those assumptions are, and they're finding employees live longer, they're seeing that there's fewer employees in the agencies, which makes sense because we, as we continue to automate, we need fewer employees to provide that service. And then, quite frankly, as the budgets continue to tighten with all the cities are unable to hire as many people. And so if you don't have as many people paying into the system, then the system will need to raise costs in order to make that up. And then the market rate assumptions, again, they used to assume 8% return, they've lowered it to seven and a half, they're going to lower it to seven. The, you know, I think what I heard is this June 30th, they'll make three. So, and again, so if they're not, if they're only making 3%, they're assuming to make 7% in order to have that 59% covered, and they're not covering it, that means all the cities and the agencies have to pay more. And then the real kicker is if you're unable to pay, now you go into the TAP fund, and that's the Terminated Asset Fund. And, you know, from the state's perspective, they want to keep CalPERS as a whole as a strong system. So if there's cities that are unable to pay their pension costs, they kick them out of the system. And, you know, I guess I can understand the wisdom of doing that from CalPERS point of view. From the city's point of view, it's devastating. So now you're no longer part of the overall pool, you're not, you don't have anyone to count on investing in returns for that 59%, and it's all on the agencies themselves. And if you can't afford paying CalPERS, you're not going to be able to pay going on your own, and therefore you have to, you're mandated to reduce pension costs, reduce services, reduce current employee, or retirement benefits and future retirement benefits. So it's a very big impact. We've seen a few of the agencies in the state dropped into the TAP pool in the last few years, and as I indicated, we'll likely see more in the next few years. And again, some of what's driving that, so they're lowering the discount rate, so they realize they haven't been making 8%, they're not going to make seven and a half percent, and so they lower the discount rate over time. And so in 2018-19, they're beginning to lower it to 7.3, 7.5%. And then they'll begin to lower it to 7.25%, eventually start lowering it to 7%. They do this in tiers. And so by 24, 2024, 2025, we'll have the full impact of the 7% discount rate. And again, if they're not making the money, someone else has to pick it up, and that would be the cities. And, and again, the 7% is still often seen as, as probably too high and probably still needs to be lower. And there's pressure on them to lower it to be realistic, but they also realize the more they lower their investment return rate, the more it'll impact the cities, and the less services the cities can provide, or the more taxes they'll require in order to provide those services. And the League of Cities did put together a few charts, I'll just go through real quickly of percent of general fund by the cities within the county. And the great, the great information, they don't have any data, but you can see that there's a, ours was 15%. The red cities, I mean, the red counties show that the cities in there are contributing more than 15% of their total general fund to CalPERS. And that's in 2017, 2018. And then by 2024, you're, 2024, 2025, you'll see that most cities will be paying more than 15%. So, you know, it's a statewide problem, it's a huge impact for the 482 cities and the 3,000 agencies that are in CalPERS. If you parse it a little bit more, so the miscellaneous employees, those are what they call the non-safety employees, by fiscal year 24, 2024, 2025, most cities will experience a 32% to 37% rate increase from where we are today. And for the public safety pension costs, most cities will be looking at a 60% to 65% increase from here until 2024, 2025. So it's just a major impact for all the CalPERS agencies going forward. I talked a bit about there's fewer workers paying into the system. That again means there's fewer employees contributing to the system and fewer, less revenue coming into CalPERS. And I touched on the accumulated growth we're going to experience, so, you know, we're looking at double-digit cost increases in the next few years of millions, millions of dollars of cost increase each of the next foreseeable years. So what to do about it? So there's a few key things we can do. You know, the one is, I mean, I think the overall is control what we can control and continue to work with the League of Cities and the other cities to make sure that we have a pension system that's sustainable and has, isn't driving massive cost increases of the cities and the agencies that make it unable for us to pay the cost and provide the service. So first would be to maintain a balanced budget. So, I mean, it sounds easy, but really we'll be in a stronger position if we have a balanced budget, if we have reserves, if we're able to not increase services beyond funding. And that's, you know, it's a good example for Santa Maria. So this year, where we have more funding, the voters authorize more funding for more services, we're providing those additional services because the funding's there. And if there's other services the community wants and they want to provide the funding for, that's great, we should provide those services that the community demands. We're just advocating to not provide services beyond what we have the funding to provide. And then recognize we don't have extra money, because what may be extra money today is not going to be extra money tomorrow. Work with employees to again, ensure we have financial stability. So we all have a common interest here. The city wants to make sure we are funded and we're solvent. The employees want to make sure that they have a pension for now and into the future. We want to make sure we can support that promise that we've made with the employees for that benefit. And, you know, save on our reserves, there will be a recession at some point, and we will need those reserves for the rainy day fund and be able to get through a temporary dip. And then, you know, keep a close watch of our other unfunded liabilities. So part of what I mentioned on the onset, we don't have funding in the budget for the other liabilities such as deferred maintenance, such as facility maintenance, setting aside additional money for a rainy day. And so we recognize that upfront, but it's something we should keep an eye on. I mean, our buildings will continue to get older, they'll need deferred maintenance. We, you know, we have a couple of old buildings right here in the campus that we don't use that need upgraded, upgrading, and, you know, they're going to continue to need upgrading, and we just need to keep that in mind and make sure we're not losing sight of the fact that we do have deferred maintenance requirements other than this unfunded liability to CalPERS. So again, just highlighting the changes that we do have in the budget. So the big impact is the skyrocketing CalPERS increases that I talked about. The good, gooder news is the general fund structural deficit is cut from eight and a half million to four million. We've also authorized 57 new employees, mostly with Measure U, that's unprecedented. So we will see a significant impact and increase in the service we're able to provide to the community primarily in public safety. Other service enhancements, we'll initiate Sunday hours and add staff in the public library. We have, again, no additional money for infrastructure projects or to replenish the depleted fund balances. The personnel costs continue to outpace revenues in the foreseeable future. And we'll have certain service reductions likely in the next two-year budget cycle, but we're going to take a business approach here and manage what we can manage when we can, recognizing that there's a lot of volatility out there that'll impact our decisions, whether it's the economy or whether it's CalPERS changing something else. But, you know, we'll come forward, this next year's budget as we propose now is balanced. There's other things that we weren't able to fund right now that we'll take a look at in three months and see if we have the funding for it or try to get grants for it, and just we'll work over the next few years to just take those small steps to make sure we stay balanced and remain in a strong position if the economy turns. And that concludes the staff report. If there's questions from the council or public comment, and then we'll take your direction and hope you adopt the resolution for the next year's budget.
Any questions of Mr. Stillwell?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Stillwell, listening to this explanation certainly is a lot to take in. But if I'm hearing you correctly, regardless of what somebody wants to put the blame on or anyone wants to put the blame on, when CalPERS experiences these shortfalls, it falls back to the, you said 482 cities?
Yes.
482 cities. And each of those 482 cities stands alone, correctly? They have to resolve their portion within their budget. There's no one else out there to help us.
Right. That's correct.
So it sounds to me, and if I read you correctly, the, if there, if someone is put into this TAP fund, this TAP system, they're going to be forced to reduce current retirees and current employees for their pending retirement. Do you have any idea what some of those percentages have been or predicted?
Yep. So off the top of my head, I think there's three. Um, so off the top of my head, I think there's three agencies that have been recently placed into the TAP and I believe they had, uh, 60% reductions in their pensions to their retirees. Um, and, uh, yeah, it sharply increased costs to the city or to the agencies. Two were cities and one was a JPA, um, to fund the costs, to fund the remaining costs. So it's a double whammy. It's really a direct impact to the employees by, um, not having, by the city, the agency not having the funding available for the promised benefits and it's a direct impact to the residents because now the services are no longer available either because additional funding has to go to pay for the remaining personnel costs.
Okay. So, um, the current retirees and the future retirees are lumped together there and they're going to be fighting for, uh, their promised retirement.
Yeah.
And, uh, as a retiree, I, I, I don't know, I'd have to ask my wife, but 60% I'm sure would have to, um, seriously affect, uh, the way I as, we as individuals live. So I would think that it, that it would behoove all of us, the current and perhaps even gather some of the, um, currently retired, but the current employees to work together. Is there an effort to reach out and?
Yes.
And do something to, um, to start to prepare us all for this, particularly the current employees who are working diligently to, toward their retirement and then only to find out that what was promised is not going to be there if we find ourselves in this TAP fund. So it's significantly important that we do not find ourselves in that TAP system.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. It's very important we avoid the TAP fund. I agree. And that is the last resort. Um, I mean, the cities that are there, um, are only there because they have no other option other maybe than some bankruptcy or some other legal option. But, um, and as far as working with our employee groups, we have started and the labor agreements that the council has adopted does have the employees paying an increased share of their pension costs. And so, and so I think what we need to do is continue to have those conversations, continue to have the employees realize that, you know, we're not out of the woods. We need to continue collectively to manage this situation because as you indicated at your, outset of your comments, it's really up to this city to manage this.
I just think that's a real, uh, scary proposition for the current and the future retirees to have to deal with, uh, when they're all, I did anyways, when they're all making plans as to what to do at post-employment.
Mm-hmm.
So it just sounds like it's a messy deal to deal with. Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah. Dr. Moats, are you got a question?
No, I was just going to ask what the councilman, Cordero just asked.
Okay. Any questions come? Ms. Waterfield?
I think going forward and all of us, we need to really keep this in mind, just exactly what Councilman Cordero said because the pendulum is always going to move and it's always, we, we cannot rely on Sacramento or CalPERS to give us true figures because that's always a moving target. And so we're going to have to be, I know a lot of people don't like the word fugle, fugle, but we have to, we have to stay that way because, you know, at any time the, the sky could fall and especially with this, uh, this issue, it would be devastating not to be able to, uh, give our employees a retirement that, that they've worked so hard for. And then looking at someone like, uh, Councilman Cordero who has been through the system and relies on that, it's just, it, it's not us being mean, it's us being realistic and understanding that we always have a moving target there. And, you know, if we could do more, we would, but that's never going to happen. So we just got to make sure that we always remember this budget and how we go forward with it.
You know, this is something we've been talking about for so many years now. How effective then is the League of Cities actually? I mean, they know what's going on and there are cities worse off than us.
Oh, they're, yes.
And I, I, maybe that's a rhetorical question, but it's just, it seems like they should be more proactive in what they're doing at the League of Cities because something needs to be done like yesterday.
Yeah. So Madam Mayor, the, you know, the report we received from the League two Fridays ago was, um, you're right, they, they do need to continue to do more. Um, the, the, the two problems really they see is that it's not seen as an acute budget issue in Sacramento. And the second one is the fixes they're making are long-term solutions with, uh, short-term pain. And reckon, and so the League's working with the state to recognize that that short-term pain will have huge impacts for a lot of cities. And, you know, I think the, well, the, the lasting point that the League had was that just make sure when we're talking to our legislators or our employee groups that the first thing we talk about is the pension costs and the pension crisis and the last thing we leave with is the pension costs and the pension crisis.
Do you get the feeling that they're just saying, oh, I won't be there when that happens, I'll be gone? I mean, I've heard, I've heard that from legislators on, on other subjects. And so it just doesn't, yeah, I mean, it's off in the future and so it's, I'm not going to be concerned with that and I don't want to fight, fight that battle.
Yeah. And I think we've heard that from not our employee groups, but employees across the state have said that. And, and as Councilmember Cordero mentioned, that could be devastating because, I mean, CalPERS has also changed the rules where, um, you can't work for a CalPERS agency if you retired. So if, if an, the worst case really would be an employee retires, is, um, you know, living their life, their retired life and leisure and then has their pension cut and they can't go back to work with their agency. You'd have to un-retire and go back or work for some other non-CalPERS agency. So it's, it's very constraining and it's something, again, you want to avoid. We want to, we can do what we can do to control going down that path and we want to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then to put it in perspective, it would be like for those of us who have mortgages and you say you have a 30-year mortgage and then our mortgage lender comes and tells us, I'm sorry, we're, we're going to cut that to 15 years. And so you double your payment and you're just like, ah, that's not what I budgeted for, that's not what I planned for. And there isn't a darn thing you can do about it. That's, that's, that's the rotten part of this whole deal.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah, just a couple of observations. Doesn't CalPERS restrict its return on investment by not investing in things that consider socially undesirable?
Yeah.
And question two, the state has huge budget, uh, surpluses right now. Would they consider contributing anything to CalPERS?
They haven't, yeah, the, the state hasn't considered yet, but that again is why the League and the cities are working to highlight the issue to the state. Because again, from the state's point of view, they have budget surpluses and they don't see this as an imminent problem. And of course, uh, the cities that are legal arms of the state in most cases are unable to provide the direct service to the public as a result of this. Um, that is another, but your first point, that is another avenue the League is, um, fighting legislation on is to the, um, I think what you said, the social engineering of the investments. And there were two bills, um, that the, that were, um, introduced this year. One was to prevent, um, CalPERS from investing in private prisons and the other was to prohibit CalPERS from investing in, uh, the Republic of Turkey. And the League opposed both of those for the reasons you mentioned is, you know, focus on the fiduciary, they want CalPERS to focus on the fiduciary role they have and to make the return on investment they need to make in order to hit their discount rate target.
Yes, Ms. Soto.
Given that we know what, given that we know it's pending, um, what can we do to ensure that we can sustain what we have currently and also as we look into growth, right? Because we're also having to build more housing and, um, with the general plan update, we're really going to be focusing on how we want the city to grow. How are we, um, how can we best prepare for that? And how can we make sure that our services are sustainable?
That's a good question. And the answer's really everything, right? Um, and, and we are doing a lot and I would say we're touching on everything. So as you indicated, we're updating the general plan with the focus there of making sure that we can, um, have the land use, um, available to meet the needs of our growing economy. Uh, we've done certain things like I mentioned, the santamariavalley.com to enhance our tourist revenue. And that's, you know, revenue that's imported from people from out of the area who come and stay here, um, support our businesses, our restaurants and our retailers because they all generate sales tax for the city. Uh, work to continue to maintain and reduce costs where possible and our big costs is our employee groups. And so we continue to work with them on coming up with, um, uh, labor agreements that are sustainable over time. And I think, you know, the big part is just continue to have the conversation, have everyone be able to work together to recognize that these costs are going, going to increase and it will be tough to maintain service levels. And we'll look at maintaining service levels and how we keep the budget balanced going forward. Um, you know, they'll, I mean, we'll, as we bring issues forward, whether it's, um, fee adjustments or CPI adjustments to certain costs, I mean, that, those will all factor in as well. So it's a really, the answer's a bit of everything.
Thank you. And I was, when I was reading the report, I noticed that part of the budget would be to add a school resource officer. Uh, what school would that be? Or is that? How do we determine that?
Yeah, the school resource officers are funded by the school. So that's part of why we recommended that again to our principal of if there's funding to provide the service, we will provide the service.
They have asked for an official loan. I'm sorry, now, I don't know which school they're funding.
So the school districts request?
They, they contract for the idea.
It's, I think it's our fourth one. Yeah, so we have, we have three school resource officers now and they work with the schools in the school district and we're adding a fourth at the request of the school. And the school pays, uh, the majority of the cost of, of that police officer to spend the time in the schools.
I know they, they recently moved them around.
They rotated them.
But, yeah, so that, that was something very recent. So, um, some of them, um, were at the junior highs and now they're going up to the high school. So they're tracking these kids. They've known the kids from junior high, now they'll be knowing them and the same kids in high school. So I know they've moved them around, but I, I can't tell you where they all are right now.
It'd be interesting to know the actual number of the cost, um, especially if the school district isn't paying for the full amount. If you can just send that over.
Yeah, they pay, I believe, 70% somewhere around there. And, uh, and that's really because 70% of the officer's time is to put school with the summer and then the school schedule. And so we're able to, um, utilize the other 30% of the officer for other duties in the city.
I, I have another question. I also see that, um, we're, um, just for the purpose for everybody to know exactly what this is, a one-year special allocation of $50,000 to the Santa Maria Chamber of Commerce to support the establishment for the regional economic development. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that, please?
Sure. Yes, so there's, I believe, three components of that. The main one was the Hourglass Regional Economic Development Project that you received a report on a month ago. And it's, um, they're, they talked about it as bridge funding until the private sector kicks in more. So it was a way for, um, our community to pay our share and it's not the full share. I mean, we have businesses in the community that are interested in supporting it as well. Um, and then there were a couple of other smaller parts of that, again, for the regional economic development. And it's a, we looked at it as a one-year funding because it's, we want to look at what the return on that investment is and make sure that those efforts are, um, bringing household jobs or bringing new investment into our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have any written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Do we have any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Dr. Moats?
Couple more questions.
Oh, okay.
Notice we have a couple of dentists in the audience here this evening and I was wondering if you'd comment about any restoration of the funds to put fluoride in the drinking water.
Sure. The, um, thank you, Dr. Moats. Um, the proposed budget does include, uh, adding $48,000 in the water fund for restoration of fluoride if adopted by the council. And we would, and in order to do that, we would have to again follow our state regulations and the, to do the proper noticing and, um, take that time before we can implement it. But with the funding, we'd then be able to move forward.
One other question. A proposal from the Monterey Bay Power Company was presented to us in our, one of our recent council meetings with the possibility of saving the city a lot of money on its power bills. Are we going to hear any more about that or?
So, uh, thank you, Dr. Moats. We are, um, that, the assumptions for the cost savings are not built into this budget. We have a, um, we have meetings coming up with our business community to see if there's interest in them in reducing costs. I had a meeting last Friday with the surrounding cities and, um, all of the cities have agreed to join from Paso Robles to Guadalupe. And, uh, Slow County is, uh, they were, had real similar questions with what the Santa Maria City Council had. And, uh, so Slow County is undertaking an independent audit and I asked them if we can, um, get, be privy to the results of that independent audit, really to get a third-party view of what are the economic benefits of this and are the cost savings sustainable? Because I, I agree, I mean, the council did ask a lot of good questions of how does this work? Um, what are the ongoing savings? What if we don't want to take part of it? What if we want to opt out? And those are good questions that I think would good, would be good to have independent answers for.
Do you know when they would expect that?
Um, I got an email today from, uh, the county executive up there saying that they're requesting proposals to do that work. So it's, I don't have a date expectation, but it's underway.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. I'll bring this item back to the council for discussion or an emotion.
If there's no discussions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the amendments to the 2019, 20 mid-cycle city budget and authorizing the city manager to implement the same.
Is there a second? It's moving second. The only thing I'd like to, to comment on and discussion on page 12, it does say add the $48,000 to resume the fluoridation.
And to add the $48,000 to resume fluoridation.
Yeah, that says that in the, um, in the staff report. So I just was going to comment on that.
Perfect.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion? Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say that as we move forward, um, I just really hope that things continue as they are and that we don't have an economic downturn in the future and that our, that our job is really to, to stand alongside our, our employees who are really making the wheels turn for the city. And so, um, really hoping, keeping my fingers crossed that we don't have an economic downturn.
We will have an economic downturn. I don't know when or where or how or who, but it'll happen.
Okay, Madam Clerk. Add that, no economic downturn to that.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Waterfield?
Hi.
Councilmember Moats?
Hi.
Councilmember Cordero?
Hi.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, pettino?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, just before we go to the next item, can I just, um, thank you for adopting the budget. We look forward to doing the work in the next year. I'd like to just quickly thank the staff. We started at a department director meeting, um, literally with a picture on a napkin about how we're going to address the CalPERS challenge. So it's a lot of work by all the departments to go into this budget. I want to recognize them and thank them for that. Thank Shad for the napkin drawing and of course Mary Harvey and the finance crew for a great job in our office with Tony and Mark to be able to put together this budget. So thank you.
Yes, I certainly want to thank all the staff for that because that's, I know that takes a lot of work and putting it together and it's like a puzzle. Okay, the next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
So Madam Mayor, the next meeting of the council is now canceled based on the action of the council this, this, earlier this evening. So the July 2nd meeting of the city council is, uh, is canceled due to the action tonight. The next meeting of the city council will be, uh, July 16th. And, um, it's, at this point, it's a light agenda with the Hometown Heroes presentation, appointments to the boards and commissions and, um, the, uh, we're hoping to award the bid to the Los Flores Shooting Range Facility. And then we'll have the implementation of this budget here with the personnel changes as well. And that's, that concludes my report for July 16th.
Thank you. Next item is oral reports of council members. Ms. Soto, shall we start with you?
Allison. Good for you, good for you. Um, not too much. Some of my meetings were canceled. My LAFCO board meeting was canceled. Um, the Santa Maria Police Council, we had a very good event on June the 10th. Uh, we had the biggest turnout we've ever had in a long time. I don't have the numbers, but the numbers look exceedingly well. Uh, we had 138 golfers and we had 244 people for dinner. So, uh, we've got a lot of support from the
So, we've got a lot of support from the community for our police officers, so it's just an honor to be part of that endeavor. I also went to June 13th, the Police Department swearing-in, where we had seven very fine young men being sworn in as officers. I believe the majority, they're from Santa Maria. All of them were from Santa Maria, and some of them were explorers as well. So, some of them were laterals from other agencies that wanted to come back to Santa Maria, but overall, it was just a very impressive group of young men. And again, you know, we have the finest, I would say, not only on the Central Coast but in the state of California. So, I'm very proud to be a city councilwoman for these great people. Today, I had a meeting in regards to CCWA contract assignment, which I will report later on after I have my CCWA meeting next week. And Madam Mayor, that's, that's it.
Dr. Moats.
Okay, on June 6th, I did the wrap-up of the Ban Ace program, as I'm going to do tomorrow. And not being an accountant, I'm not quite sure how I'm going to wrap this up, but it'll be a challenge. And on June 10th, I was also at the police council.
Thank you.
That was a great challenge. You put on a good program.
Thank you very much. I am just so excited about this, this event last week. Like I said, it was our biggest and best, and it grows every single year, and we add more activities to our golf, and they just come out and they love it, and the weather was awesome. It was in the 80s, and it was just
And the desserts were wonderful.
Oh, yes. Madam, I got to tell you, Madam Mayor donated two desserts that brought in $1,300 in a live auction, so she's a pretty good baker.
Now I know who to call for my fundraisers.
One other thing about the police council, I was the winner of the $500 round.
That's right, you were. $500 went towards the live auction, and so, so what did you get?
Well, we gave it all back. We did a $500 paddle race.
Awesome. Good for you. Wonderful. Well, thank you very much.
I won it last year and bought a $500 cake.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the, on the 10th, I also attended the police comedy night. I've never gained an interest in, or find, found a need for whacking that little white ball down the stairway, so I just went to the dinner. It was, it was a real exciting evening. The comedian was exceptionally effective, also very group-appropriate, I would say. And it was, he was just so funny in so many things, and sometimes just his delivery is what made it funny. But we certainly, we certainly enjoyed it, and it's great to get together with those people. And on the 13th, I also attended the police swear-in, where these seven young officers. I think that, that the hiring of these people was truly a grand slam for our police department, and it's going to make going for sergeant in about five or six years extremely difficult. And if that's one of the things you want to make difficult, that would certainly be one of them. Not only did we hire five of the, seven of these people, but the chief managed to hire six of them, had training elsewhere, training that is going to be beneficial to our community and is going to be cost savings to our budget. One of them, as I understand, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, one of them is a trained bomb technician.
Yes.
And one of them is a SWAT-trained sniper.
Yes.
Both of these schools and training are very expensive and very labor-intensive, and you might also understand that when the officer is out to training in these schools, someone has to replace him or her as, as their responsibilities, their normal responsibilities here, here in the community. So, I think it was a great selection process, and as Ms. Waterfield said, they're all from Santa Maria. One of the gentlemen is a four-year Marine Corps veteran, and it was just an impressive, impressive group of young people, except that they all looked like they were still in junior high. And that, that would be it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Yes, I did accuse the chief of going down to the junior high to recruit those young men. Mr. Cordero says, I can't remember that I ever looked that young. June 10th, I attended the Santa Maria Police Council 11th Annual Golf Tournament Comedy Night. And on the 12th, North County Subregional Meeting in solving. Also, in solving, we discussed the Measure A Citizens Oversight Committee applicant, and the person that we decided on came from Buellton. On the 13th, I attended the Police Department swearing-in ceremony. They had to move all the tables out of the room because there was a lot of aunts, uncles, nieces, cousins, brothers, sisters, mom and dads, and grandparents.
And good friends.
And good friends. I saw a couple of police officers that came over from Stockton, and I think that says something about our police department, that it is very family-oriented, and we certainly appreciate that. That evening, I attended the Rancho Bowl 60th Year Anniversary. On June 14th, I attended the American, Filipino-American 40th Anniversary Awards Night Celebration, and there were four awardees. One from St. Joe's, one from Santa Maria, two from Santa Maria High School, and one from Pioneer. And I think that is it. Anything else from the dais? If not, this meeting is adjourned.
Has, has